Welcome to the Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is two eleven P. M. And we are in the Building and Safety Boardroom at two zero one North Figueroa Street, ninth floor of Los Angeles, California. I am President Iris Mason. I will be chairing this meeting. The following commissioners are present. Commissioners Farmby, Melendez, and Nash. I'm going to go over some housekeeping items before we get started. This meeting is being recorded, therefore we ask that when addressing the commission, you speak close to the microphone and only one person at a time. Please state your name each time you speak. Members of the public who wish to only listen to the commission meeting and not provide public comment may call council phone at two one three six two one two four eight nine or eight one eight nine zero four nine four five zero. This meeting is also being livestreamed. Individuals who wish to watch this meeting may do so by visiting cannabis.lacity.gov. We will be following the agenda order for the most part. Agendas are located on the table by the entrance door along with speaker cards. Individuals who are physically here and wish to address this commission must fill out a speaker's card and specify which item or items you are going to speak on. Individuals can provide public comment or comments about a specific agenda item in person or virtually via the Zoom link provided on the agenda. If you are present at the meeting, please fill out a speaker card and turn it into Irene or Josie. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and clearly state your name. If you are in a Zoom call when the item you wish to speak on is called, press star nine to get on the speaking queue. The commission executive assistant will call out each speaker by the last four digits of their telephone number to identify the caller. The caller will be prompted to unmute themselves by dialing star six. We will consider general public comment and single or multiple agenda items together. Therefore, speakers will have one minute for general public and one minute per item with a maximum of two minutes for multiple items. In total, an individual speaker shall be limited to three minutes of public comment per meeting. Representatives from neighborhood councils who have filed a resolution or community impact statement with the city clerk, which relates to any agenda item, will be given time to speak during the item itself. Please provide a copy of the filed statement or resolution to the commission executive assistant. Any neighborhood council representative speaking on behalf of their neighborhood council must provide a letter on their letterhead stating the neighborhood council's position on the matter. Absent any neighborhood council documentation, comments may still be provided during the public comment period. We ask that speakers state whether they are providing general public comment and/or which other item or items they are speaking on before they begin to comment, so that staff can appropriately time them. If the speaker does not specify which items they are speaking on, one minute will be allowed. PowerPoint presentations presented to the commission today, whether it's by the department or applicants, will be posted online and made available to the public via DCR's website within two business days. For those attending the in-person meeting, please be aware that after six o'clock P. M., I'm going to skip this, we won't be here. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibration so as not to disturb the proceedings. Please be respectful, disruptions will not be tolerated. If you disrupt the proceedings, you will receive two warnings. If you continue the disruptive behavior, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Moving on to item one, which is the public comment period. It is now open for general public comment and single or multiple agenda items. Speakers can address the commission on non-agenda-related items that are within jurisdiction of the commission or provide public comment for items in today's agenda. If you are listening in the livestream and have called to provide public comment via Zoom, please mute the livestream audio before you begin speaking to eliminate feedback. We will alternate between calling up individuals here at the meeting and those on the call. Please bear with us. First up, in-house Leona Whitney Beatty.
We speak to public comment and item four.
You have one minute.
I'm also talking to agenda item four. Does that make me two minutes?
I'm sorry, what items again?
General public comment and then agenda.
Okay, two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Whitney Beatty. I'm the owner of Josephine and Billy's, a social equity dispensary in South Los Angeles. I started this business because I believed in the promise of legal cannabis to create jobs, build generational wealth, and give back to a community that was devastated by the war on drugs. But that dream is slipping away, not because I did anything wrong, but because the city has made it nearly impossible for me to succeed. Before I even opened my doors, I spent two hundred fifty thousand dollars just to hold my space because of delays, waiting for the city's licensing process to play out. That's a quarter of a million dollars gone, one-fourth of what I raised before I even had a dollar of revenue. I drained my savings, I took on debt, I made sacrifices that no small business owner should have to make just to have a shot at success. And then when we finally opened, the real financial burden kicks in. The city of Los Angeles cannabis operators are drowning under some of the highest cannabis taxes in the nation. We're talking fifteen percent excise taxes going up to nineteen, ten percent local business tax, and nine point five sales tax. With compounding, that's over forty percent in taxes before I even cover payroll, inventory, rent, or security. Meanwhile, four illegal dispensaries within a mile and a half of my shop pay nothing and they face zero consequences. How am I supposed to compete with that? How can any legal operator do so in this city? Other cities have recognized these taxes are unsustainable. Oakland lowered tax rates for small businesses on a tiered tax system. San Ana reduced their local taxes to help operators compete. San Francisco, they're at five percent. But Los Angeles is standing still while our businesses are being taxed. These aren't just numbers on a spreadsheet. This is my life, it's my livelihood. This is my employees' paychecks. This is my son watching me struggle to keep a business alive that was supposed to be a path to financial freedom instead of living in the possibility of losing our house to a CDTFA lien. I urge this commission to send a clear message to the mayor and city council. Reduce local cannabis taxes to a fair competitive rate. Implement tax relief and forgiveness.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the queue? Yes, caller with phone number ending in one zero nine zero. Please state your name and which items you're speaking on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
My name is James Doherty, and I'd like to speak on public comment.
Is that general?
Ah, yes.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is James Doherty, and I work with licensed social equity operators in L.A. Right now, social equity businesses are being suffocated by unfair taxation, outrageous penalties, and a complete failure of enforcement against unlicensed dispensaries. While folks struggle to keep their doors open, illegal shops flourish in our neighborhoods, selling untested products without paying a dime in taxes. Social equity businesses are drowning under forty to fifty percent in taxes and penalties while illicit operators have a free pass. We demand immediate enforcement to shut them down, find the landlords, and protect the businesses that this city's claiming to support. We also need immediate tax amnesty for past due liabilities and a five-year tax holiday for social equity operators moving forward. Without these measures, they will not survive. I've spoken to dozens of social equity retailers throughout the city, and not a single one is able to make a livable wage from the businesses that they own. If the city does not act, it will lose the very businesses this program was meant to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to in-house, Daniel Sosa.
Greetings, commissioners, my name is Daniel Sosa. I would like to again bring up what Jason Colleen brought to our attention a couple of meetings ago.
Sorry, just a moment. What items are you speaking on?
General public comment.
You have one minute.
I would like to again bring up what Jason Colleen brought to our attention a couple of meetings ago, that state-licensed dispensaries currently owe one point three billion dollars in taxes to the state, an average of about one million dollars per dispensary, not including Los Angeles City dispensaries, which owe two hundred and eighty million dollars in back taxes to the city. I know it was discussed to agendize this issue at a commission meeting, and I would like to implore this body to please officially agendize the taxation issue for discussion at a future meeting. Legalization has happened, but the harms of cannabis prohibition have not been undone. They are in a different form. That form is draconian over taxation. Thank you.
Mr. Bezos, is there anyone in the queue? Yes, caller with phone number ending in two seven eight five. Please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Plushette Turner, can you hear me?
Yes, which items would you like to speak on?
A general public comment for the social equity.
You have one minute.
Okay, so I frequent the dope-sugar Los Angeles location in our community with promised economic opportunities through the social equity program. But instead, we see illegal dispensaries thriving while black-owned businesses are struggling to stay afloat. These legal businesses employ local residents, pay taxes, and reinvest in our neighborhoods, yet they're being crushed by high taxes and lack of enforcement. Illegal dispensaries don't pay taxes, don't follow regulations, and don't contribute to our community. The city must step up enforcement and provide social equity tax relief, including tax amnesty and a five-year tax holiday so these businesses can reinvest in jobs and growth. Without action, we will lose the businesses that were supposed to create opportunities in our neighborhoods. We need fairness, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Martin McDermott. I'm here to speak on the first one, general comment, and also item five.
Okay, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much. I am Martin McDermott, and while I'm not in the cannabis business directly, I own a building that was built out of the beautiful dispensary near downtown Los Angeles. It was designed by a leading firm out of London who created impressive showrooms for global retail brands. We built it as a Silver Lead certified dispensary. We think that might be the first in the city, we're quite proud of that. And we made this investment in the city in a particular neighborhood that's only a thousand feet from the convention center, but is often overlooked. We believe that this building should be a vibrant cannabis consumption cafe, enhancing community culture. However, we are deeply concerned with the proven burden of the high costs of taxes and fees that our current or probably our future tenant will face. We hope you'll consider measures to reduce these taxes that the cannabis customers pay and the fees and taxes that the operators pay at the legal dispensaries. Also, I've been an active commercial real estate broker in the city of Los Angeles for the last twenty-three years. During this time, I have seen the industry at large prey upon the cannabis entrepreneur. So landlords overcharge rent, banks overcharge, insurance overcharges. Everybody comes for the cannabis and entrepreneur thinking that it's a deep pocket and it's just not. This was actually one of the inspirations we had to go ahead and buy a building and invest and do something different. So we charge the same price regardless of use, right? There is no upcharge for cannabis. It's a fair and transparent deal. And we asked the city to finish the normalization process of cannabis and do the same thing, charge normalized prices for taxation and fees, just like any other business in the city. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bezos, anyone on the queue? Yes, caller with phone number ending in zero zero four three. Please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Aprese Osajayfu Oyadeye, and I'm here to speak on item number eight and general public comment.
You have two minutes.
Social equity without governmental financial support equals failure. The war on drugs terrorized black and brown communities for over fifty years, and it was not private industry or investors who were responsible for that suffering. It was the government. Therefore, it should be the government that financially supports social equity enterprises. Additional grant funds are needed as well as guaranteed low-interest or no-interest loans from one hundred thousand to two million paid directly to social equity individual lottery winners. This is the only way the social equity program can succeed. The city needs to loan each SEIA retail storefront and delivery licensee one hundred K to one million to cover any expenses except the purchase of inventory. Social equity cultivator licensees should be allowed to borrow up to two million. Repayment begins one year after your business opens. Its doors are five years from the inception of the loan, whichever comes first. Providing guaranteed loans and grants to social equity candidates is the only way social equity doesn't fail. Granting social equity individuals a licensing opportunity without any financial assistance is akin to the freeing of the slaves in eighteen sixty-three without giving them the forty acres and a mule as promised. This left the slaves still one hundred percent dependent on the same slave master and forced the slaves into sharecropping agreements. Today, in the social equity cannabis industry, it's known as a management service agreement. This agreement allows the slave master, oh, excuse me, the investor to have complete control of our licenses and give us nothing while they bleed the company dry in front of our very eyes. The system is rigged for the failure of those harmed the most by the war on drugs. Furthermore, the five-year monatorium on non-social equity applicants obtaining retail storefront and delivery licenses must be extended an additional five years. Fifty years of terrorism cannot be rectified with only five or six years of exclusivity. The time for action is now.
I'm calling up Elizabeth Ventoria.
Hi, Elizabeth Ventoria, general public comment and item number five.
You have two minutes.
Good afternoon, commissioners, my name is Elizabeth Ventoria, and I am a licensed social equity cannabis operator in Los Angeles. Right now, my business is being suffocated by unfair taxation, outrageous penalties, and a complete failure to shut down unlicensed dispensaries. I followed the rules, but while I struggled to survive under forty, under over forty percent in taxes and penalties, illegal shops continue to thrive, selling untested products without paying a dime. The social equity program was supposed to be about reparations and opportunities. Instead, we got a license with no funding, no infrastructure, and no real support. My family put everything we had into this business. We sacrificed our careers believing we were building a future. We've been forced to cut employees, security, even insurance, and then our store was robbed. While we struggled to recover, CDTFA comes after us and not the illegal operators. Meanwhile, the city drags its feet on promised relief, delaying grants and hitting us with surprise fees. This program was not designed for us to succeed. If it were, we'd have access to capital and real resources. We were set up to fail. We demand action, immediate enforcement against illegal shops, penalties for their landlords and real relief, tax amnesty for past due liabilities, and five-year tax holiday for social equity operators. Without this, we will not survive. If the city doesn't act, it will lose the very businesses this program was meant to help. Thank you.
Mr. Bezos, anyone on the queue? Yes. Caller, please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
A general comment, please. My name is Asatouz Moja. I'm with the Hyde Park Organizational Partnership for Empowerment, and I'm here to speak specifically about the concerns around cannabis regulation. We have several unlicensed cannabis operations going on in our community. We're very concerned about that. We want to see the licensed cannabis owners actually have the businesses because, number one, they have the product that's supposed to be up to government code. The other thing is that our communities have been severely and were severely impacted by the drug influx that came into our communities. And one of the things that cannabis was supposed to do that it still has not done is to have reinvestment of at least thirty percent of the total sales back into our community. And my understanding is that millions, probably billions, are being made off taxes from cannabis. The communities that have been impacted and suffered all these years because of drug influx in our communities have not received a single dime. I'd like to have some accountability in terms of.
Christopher Martin? I'm sorry, Martinez.
Thank you, I'd like to make a public comments on item one and item number five.
You have a minute.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners, I'd like to thank for the opportunity to make these public comments. My name is Christopher Martinez, and I am a cannabis consultant, social equity advocate, and social equity operator. I would like to address the commission regarding social equity refiling requirements. The requirement of refiling as the original business entity traps the equity individual in predatory partnerships indefinitely and removes their ability to control their business. My cousin is currently in this situation. We've reached out to the DCR to see what can be done, and we're still waiting for a response, some help or guidance. I urge the commission to do what they can to revise the refiling requirements that forces social equity individual applicants to refile under the original business entity. A clear pattern is emerging where investors realizing that profit is imminent or no profit is imminent, they'll stop paying their taxes, ignore compliance, and siphon money from the operation until it collapses. The social equity individual is then left with debt, fines, and no path forward. This regulation enables predatory practices instead of protecting the social equity individuals that is meant to uplift. In regards to item number five, the grant, it shows that basically the money that's coming in is getting siphoned and going directly to the city to pay for these annual fees. On taxes alone, you guys are collecting or the city's collecting roughly close to a hundred million dollars on cannabis taxes alone. If we look at just specifically the annual renewal fee of four thousand and two something multiplied by the total operators, which is a thousand four hundred and something, we're talking about close to, where do I have it right here? Close to six million dollars. To fund just social equity licenses, renewal fees, you're talking about roughly two million dollars. So there's some budgeting that could be made, I think, where social equity individuals' annual license could be paid for, therefore they could have direct access to the grant from the state and go directly to their operation, which is ultimately meant to be. And just to add on top of that, I've gone through every experience that all these other operators are talking about predatory landlords, predatory business partnerships.
Thank you.
We started in twenty sixteen and barely started operating last year, so it's hard.
Mr. Bezos, anyone in the queue? There are no raised hands, but I will make an announcement. If anyone in the Zoom meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. Caller with phone number ending in five eight five nine. Please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
Hello, I would like to speak a public comment.
Is that general comment?
General comment, yes, thank you.
You have one minute.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Angela Washington, and I'm a social equity applicant in the cannabis industry. The Department of Cannabis Regulation's ever-changing policies and procedures need significant improvement to ensure true equity. My experience highlights I secured a high-value location only to have it placed on the disconnect list through no fault of my own or the landowner. The landowner followed legal eviction procedures, but an illegal dispensary opened during the lengthy process, which was the end of eight-months process resulting in the property's disqualification. I feel there needs to be an appeals process added to the disconnect list. The new six hundred dollar land use review fee is exorbitant. I personally vetted over a hundred properties to find two suitable locations. So how is this equitable for social equity applicants? Moreover, to even qualify as a social equity applicant, we had to make below an annual amount. Once we secured an application, this immediately put us in a predatory situation.
Ishman Barber, favor.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Speaking on general comment and item number five.
You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. It's been a struggle dealing with DCR unfair fees, grants given, and then taken back by double fees. Additional charges appearing at the last minute. I requested a modification, and my analyst informed me it has cost me five hundred dollars for the first application and thirty-five hundred dollars for the second application. I started the process in October. I'm still trying to finalize this modification. In two thousand and twenty-four, I was given seven thousand and six hundred ninety-one dollars for my twenty twenty-five annual license. In January two thousand and twenty-five, I received a grant for nine thousand dollars. The DCR took the seven thousand and six hundred dollars back, claiming that it was tied up in my old record number instead of my new record number. Yesterday, I gave DCR eleven thousand and five hundred dollars, money I had to borrow to pay for this modification move. This shows that they have taken everything that they have given to me. They have taken it away. The action of DCR shows, instead of uplifting the social equity operators, they are pushing us out of the industry, and nobody's listening to us, nobody!
Mr. Bezos, is there anyone in the queue? There are no raised hands, I will make another announcement. If anyone in the Zoom meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. There are no raised hands.
Hi, I'll be speaking on general four and five.
You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Evelyn Brinson. I'm a licensed social equity cannabis operator at the Green Paradise here in Los Angeles District Ten. Right now, my business is being suffocated by unfair taxation, outrageous penalties, and a complete failure of enforcement against unlicensed dispensaries. While I struggle to keep my doors open, illegal shops flourish in our neighborhoods, selling untested products without paying a dime in taxes. Social equity businesses are drowning under forty to fifty percent in taxes and penalties while illicit operators have a free pass. We demand immediate enforcement. Shut them down, find the landlords, and protect the businesses that this city claims to support. We need immediate tax amnesty for past due liabilities, a five-year tax holiday for social equity operators moving forward. Without these measures, we will not survive. If the city does not act, it will lose the very businesses this program was meant to help. The department has let us down. I've been emailing the DCR and making visits to get assistance with our annual application, and the help desk is absolutely no help at all. We're left with enormous invoice and no response, just outrageous late fees. The program that was meant to help us is draining us, and it's been doing it since day one. There's an illegal smoke shop within two feet of my licensed business that pays absolutely no tax. The shop is literally just right next door, and I'm left with a huge tax bill every sale I make. Public safety should be the first priority, not allowing bad actors to profit while our community suffers. How is the city allowing this? Stop the excessive fees. The department is literally taking the grant funds and creating unnecessary fees. Who's standing for us? Why can't we get replies to our emails? Who is my analyst? These are simple questions that have yet to be answered, but we get invoiced excessively and our applications can't be abandoned so swiftly. This is unacceptable. This is waste, fraud, and abuse, and you guys should just be ashamed.
Mr. Bezos, is there anyone in the queue? There are no raised hands, I will make another announcement. If anyone in the virtual meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. Caller with phone number ending in four three three four. Please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
Hi, greetings, Ignite Daniel, general public comment as well as item number five.
You have two minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Ignite Daniel. I am the neighborhood liaison for Gorilla R. Rex as well as a person who has helped a number of social equity applicants in this business. We were led to believe that today's meeting would include a critical discussion on tax relief, an issue that directly impacts social equity cannabis businesses and the communities they serve despite a formal request by our neighborhood council for this topic to be included on the agenda. We have been ignored. This pattern of exclusion is unacceptable and further disenfranchises those of us already struggling under the weight of an inequitable system. We demand that the Cannabis Regulation Committee and the city council take immediate steps to address our concerns and provide real solutions, not just performative gestures. The lack of qualified coaches, the late implementation, insufficient support, no capital access, no real training, misleading claims from the DCR so-called Compliance Assistant Program, these are all failures. Even coaches, even the people that we do talk to are frustrated, and they express the restrictions that are imposed by DCR. There's no guidance, no raising of capital, and systematic neglect and broken promises. Predatory partnerships, regulatory failures, of which has repeatedly shown incompetence in the execution of the social equity program from a flawed license process to continued roadblocks that prevent us from operating successfully. Tax relief has been ignored, the city's economic policies are failing. It is just so much. We definitely need a call to action providing immediate tax relief, open real capital pathways, and hold DCR accountable. The lack of transparency is detrimental to the social equity program and direct engagement with impacted business owners is nonexistent. The integrity is not there, and that is a problem for something, a program of this nature. And correct. And correct the agenda process, ensure that community impact statements are honored and meetings include
Your time is up.
Like taxation and equity program reform.
Madison Shockley.
I'd like to speak on all the agenda items, please.
You have three minutes.
But there's five items here.
Yes, the max is three minutes.
So I can't speak on all the items?
Yes, you can speak on all the items, but the max of
Okay.
Time is three minutes.
Uh, public comment period. Uh, I'm a social equity entrepreneur, born and raised in Los Angeles, was arrested for selling weed and was low income and that's why I qualified for the program.
Can I state your name for the record?
Sure, Madison Theodore Shockley the third. Um, many of you probably don't know me because you are newer to the uh commission. Commissioner Mason, you've you've seen me here over the years many times and you've heard these stories that we're hearing now many, many times. There's never been a special meeting. There's never been an agenda item to hear us and we're always limited to two or three minutes. And so we don't get to fully educate you all. We were led to believe that this was going to be a special meeting about taxes. And we did so much research, we did so much preparation, taking time away from our families, taking time away from our businesses that are failing um beneath us right now because of the inaction. We went to our neighborhood councils to tell them what's happening. They wrote community impact statement to request that we have be agendized here and we show up. And we're not on the agenda so we can be limited? Is that why? We need you guys to take action. If you're on this commission, I'm sure you heard the rumors. If you haven't experienced these stories to this level, uh it's we're back. And we're back by necessity and we're never leaving again. Because we can't, because I can't file bankruptcy. This hundred, this this four hundred thousand dollars the city has, because of all these conditions that everybody else talked about, I can't file bankruptcy, that's a lifetime ball around my ankle. That's a result of the DCR, that's a result of this commission not doing its oversight and holding the city accountable. We wanted you guys to make a recommendation, we want to rec- educate you guys so you guys can make a recommendation and do your duty of uh to recommend things that the community brings forward. And we want y'all to recommend to the city council that we get tax forgiveness. The city council is considering this right now. I met with the city council president this morning. We met, we've been meeting with the mayor's office for the last three months about this. You guys are absent from this conversation. And we need the, we need you guys to really pay attention and address all these issues. Our lives are on the line. You guys may go home after this and think about it, but we will continue drowning. This has cost the community billions of dollars and this is only the beginning. A major civil rights lawsuit is coming down the pipeline. You guys should get on the right side of history and start aiding and not be in a another impediment. Don't be another obstacle for us. Help us, we've suffered long enough, thank you.
Ms. Triviso, is there anyone in the queue?
Yes, caller with phone number ending in three six eight three, please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
Hello, this is Robbie Davis. I sit on the board of the Park Mesa Heights Community Council. I'm going to speak in general comment because I'm not as familiar as I should be with the items that are on the agenda. But it doesn't take a lot of energy to determine that the word equity pretty soon should not remain attached to this program because from what I'm hearing, exactly the opposite is happening. I'm trying to figure out what your function is if all you're doing is paying no attention to the people that you're supposed to be advocating for. If you didn't mean to do that, why would you sit on this commission? So if you're not seeing that these issues are literally put on the city council agenda, then you're failing in your function. I myself watched years ago, young men get arrested and sent to prison for having the weight of five pennies of marijuana in their pockets. So now you got our votes by saying that you were willing to correct the wrongdoing. I'm thinking that all of the neighborhood councils that have been impacted
Your time is up.
Raben Woods?
Good afternoon, everybody here, uh president and DCR, Jason, everyone, um all the social equity applicants. Uh, this reminds me of six years ago, very familiar, I was in City Hall.
What's your name?
Raben Woods.
And which items are you speaking on?
Uh, every item I can, I need as much time as I can get, two minutes.
Three minutes.
Um, so six years ago in City Hall, I remember being a fortunate person that actually got an invoice. Uh, didn't get a license, it was an opportunity to have one. And a lot of my friends and colleagues didn't get it because we were cheated out of some things, uh filed a class action lawsuit. Y'all know the history, hopefully you do. This is repetitive and we're not asking for anything except for fairness. You know, um fortunately, I don't have similar problems when it comes to the taxes, but that's only because I don't have kids and I don't have a family, you know, um so I suffer. I just take it on a chin. And then sometimes I don't pay my personal bills so I can stay open, so I can be relevant. You know, I great, got a great store, great operator partner and all that stuff, but for two and a half years, I had somebody choking me to death. Didn't want to give me a dime. Didn't want to do anything for me, actually went out intentionally to burn my deal, is what he called it, until DCR, Dr. Imani, everybody allowed us to move. So we have made some progress, but this right now is is we're at the the precipice of we need you guys. We need the DCR, the DCC, this commission, we need a city council, we need all of you guys to come together. I have some solutions to this because I'm not in tax debt. I don't have those problems, but it's not because I'm better than anybody. Actually, most of my friends can run the store hundred times better than me. I don't even operate the store because I know I can't. But I've been with them since two thousand nineteen at least. And these are my friends, you know, and just because I don't have those problems, don't mean I'm not going to stand up and tell you, this thing is killing us. I think God just put me in position to be able to say this to you today. We really need your help, you know where I am, my story is. Dr. Imani, Jason, you guys know what's going on. You know, we're not trying to get anything except for fairness and not the fairness that the investors call fairness. Because their fairness is not fair to us. But I found a way to work with them even. To stop them from thinking that we're not anything because of what we look like and to kind of take away our distrust because of what they've done in the past. There are some, we need some things that, we need to sit down longer than two minutes. And I just implore you to, you know, I definitely got to be there because I'm being, I'm successful right now. I'm having a a situation where I have to share to somebody else because it's not about me. It's only because God knows that I'm going to help everybody else that's involved. So please, when you go home tonight, think about this. We're not begging for anything except for fairness, we want to do something right. Los Angeles should have been the epitome of what social equity looks like. We have the people in here to make these things real. These people are over the top, I know. Way, they way more knowledgeable than me. So why would God bless me to not be having these problems except for to tell you to your face?
Thank you.
Everybody ain't had. But we need to help and we need to do something about this.
Ms. Triviso, is there anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands, I will make another announcement. If anyone in the Zoom meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. There are no raised hands.
Sunshine?
Good afternoon, Commission, good afternoon, DCR. My name is Svitaslav Perinago. I am a social equity applicant, everybody calls me Sunshine and yes indeed, need your help badly.
Um, sir, what?
I'm speaking general comment and items four and five.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. And yes indeed, deeply, deeply need your help and support right now. Uh, been working so hard to find the place, build the place out, going through all the proper licensing so that way every door had, every room has two doors and getting hit with the annual license fees before being able to operate because the DCR can't get the information needed for the DCC to make my license active so that way I could actually operate and actually ask for, find another investor because I've tapped all my friends and all my family for the funds needed in order to hold the space and in order to build this dream that I've been building on for the last twenty-two years. Because I've been in this city for over twenty-five years. I'm on the neighborhood council, I'm doing my best to be a good quality citizen. Our company has a mission of self-improvement, human connection, world peace. I'm a community builder and my application is being abandoned, not because I'm making some sort of a mistake, but because there's a bill that that pops in that is eight thousand dollars per cannabis activity. It's not just for the license. And when I ask granted, my analysts say, hey, okay, listen, I can't pay all these activities, could I just keep one activity? I get stonewalled, I don't get a response, you didn't do it in time, this and that. The the commission, the the DCR is putting itself together over the last couple of years. Their processes are new as well and they have a lot of people working on them and they're getting bloated by all of these fourteen hundred applications, I understand that they're busy, but what we're asking for is to work together. We're not like coming in, there's no need for us to bog you down, for there to be a lawsuit coming or some crazy thing. Like they make a sign, this thing that says, hey, if you sue us, you're screwed, buddy. Basically, it's like a, hey, listen, if I'm going to make you an offer you can't refuse, you want to be a part of this, you want to be a part of this, then you're going to have to pay this much money. And on the other hand, it's saying, hey, check it out, we want you to join, we want you guys to be on the right side of the law. We want you guys to operate, we want you guys to build this community. There's so much energy, there's so much leadership in here and we need your leadership. Leadership is about sacrificing for yourself. So maybe the DCR can put that money aside and say, listen, we're going to make sure that when you're operational, then you can pay us. But it's not fair if they don't give us the uh the resources to communicate with the department of the State Department so they can approve. It's like, it's like this thing that's happening back and forth, the entire time we're left there holding the bag and my best friend whose parents have borrowed money from, I can't even talk to them because it's so embarrassing. So this is just destroying me as a citizen of Los Angeles and I'm asking for your help. Please make, ask the DCR to have some leniency so we can operate and create our dreams.
Thank you, your time is up.
Mr. Vizo, is there anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands, I will make another announcement. If anyone in the Zoom meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. There are no raised hands.
James Aria? On behalf of Catalyst? Brandon Brinson?
I'll be speaking on uh general public comment and four and five, items four and five.
You have three minutes.
My name is Brandon Brinson, I'm here today because LA deserves better. The city has allowed unlicensed dispensaries to overrun our communities, creating a public safety hazard while driving, while driving legal businesses out of existence. I have one right next door to me that was just robbed a couple of weeks ago, three young guys came in with guns, took his weed, whatever other drugs he had and his cash registers ran out, have all of it on video if any of you care. Uh, but they they caused trouble to my uh workers, my bartenders, they didn't know what was going on. Anyway, uh where's the accountability? We have laws in place, but that mean, but but they mean nothing if they're not enforced. We need immediate action, shut down illegal dispensaries, hold landlords accountable and support the legal businesses that you are following, that that we are following the rules. Additionally, the city must approve social equity tax relief measures, including tax amnesty and a five-year tax holiday to help these businesses survive. If the city, if the cities fails to act, then they are failing our community. We deserve safe legal businesses, not a free-for-all, puts us all at risk. And I also just like to say, we didn't know. We didn't know we were about to be a part of this nefarious scheme. We were just doing what you guys told us to do. As your colleague Solomon told us in our last mayor's office meeting, everything that's being done to us feels very vindictive. We didn't know y'all were about to let two hundred and twenty-six people in before us on September third. We were just in the room with someone that was already in y'all's system, that's how we found out. We didn't know this was about to be the fight of our lives. Y'all told us to go out and get families, family members and that's what we did. And it has ruined families, this program has absolutely ruined families. We didn't know y'all were about to treat us like crap in this program. We didn't know, I mean honestly, we just didn't know. So this is why we say waste, fraud and abuse. Because the money, it's a waste because we can't even get a simple question answered at the help desk. Or even get an ethical ethical business response to our emails. We still don't know who our analyst analyst is. It's fraud because of the hundreds of lives we've collected from y'all over the years and y'all have always talked about these seminars that we have yet to learn anything from. Y'all talk about everything other than how to run a dispensary. I have yet to see a visual on what it looks like to operate, the most basic things. And it's abuse because y'all already, y'all already raping us. Y'all already raping us and then the the taxes are supposed to increase, but just go ahead and kill us all away. And it still makes no sense because this program was for meant for low income. That's all I got to say because it don't make sense to even continue to keep talking.
Thank you, your time is up.
Mr. Vizo, is there anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands, I will make another announcement. If anyone in the Zoom meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. There are no raised hands.
Brandy Brown?
Good afternoon, my name is Brandy Brown, I'll be speaking on agenda items, uh general public comment on uh four and five.
You have three minutes.
I'm a verified social equity uh license holder, like uh those who have come up and spoken before me. And uh yeah, our basic ask is that the DCR fulfill its original intent with this program. I do believe that it was uh well-intentioned uh at its inception, but we are all here before you, letting you know that it's it's just not working out for us, uh it's 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 a beyond a fiasco. Uh, personally, I am in a situation of of tax debt myself. Uh, so I am here to urge that you guys give us tax amnesty, fair taxation, tax forgiveness. Um, I had a location open, uh but been in pretty much back-to-back uh predatory situations that I've had to uh free myself from, uh but have been left with uh over close to twenty-five thousand dollars uh in taxes uh that I don't really know where I'm going to get these funds from. I have to, you know, get on a payment plan with the with the CDTFA. I don't have any property, you know, for them to put a lien on. Um, but I'm still in a a situ- a situation where it's uh is having uh my license is at risk. Luckily, I have experienced some leniency uh and some communication with my analysts and uh the DCR, but not much. Uh, I've reached out to certain council members uh back, going back to December and we met with them the other morning. They encouraged us to communicate more, but again, I've I've reached out to council member Padia back in December and if you had to hear back anything, uh there is a situation of us being, I don't know if intentionally stonewalled, but seemingly ignored uh when we are reaching out to the DCR. So we need help, this is an urgent situation, people's lives on the line, a lot of us are not able to file bankruptcy. Uh, I filed bankruptcy before, so I don't want to have to do that again. Um, and um, you know, we are all trying to do our due diligence, we've done the right things. We're watching other people, you know, throw up a green cross and, you know, laugh off into the sunset. And with no consequence, you know, literally setting up shop next door to us. And these are community nuisances, people are uh, losing their lives at these locations. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's unsafe for the community at large, and uh, it's just is causing us a detriment. This was supposed to be, again, about a reparation, about repairing a harm caused to us by the war on drugs. I was arrested every single year of high school as a child, from age thirteen to sixteen years old, for consuming marijuana. And here we are, you know, still struggling in this business, and people are still, you know, having to fight for their freedoms. So thank you so much, and we just urge you for this help that we're asking for today, thank you.
Mr. Vizo, is there anyone in the queue?
I will make another announcement, there are no raised hands. If anyone in the Zoom meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine.
Kathy Guyton. Hi, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. My name is Emily Wada, I'm in the city attorney's office, and I just wanted to make sure, Ms. Guyton, that you, are you speaking here as a member of the public or as the neighborhood council?
This is item number two, right?
Yes, well, you, your neighborhood council equa rights submitted a community impact statement.
And that's what I'm reading.
Okay, so then you could speak.
During the item itself.
Yeah, on agenda item two, you can also give a
So this isn't two.
Oh, this is not two, right, we're still in number one. But you you can also give public comment during number one if you'd like as well.
No, I'll wait for number two.
Wonderful, thank you.
Skyton, please approach. I just need you to update your speaker card to show that you're gonna speak on item two. It says general comment. Thank you. Kika Keith.
Greetings, commissioners, um, I'll be speaking on general four and five.
Okay, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I had a whole presentation together for tax relief, thinking that that's what this meeting was for, so um, I'm not gonna be redundant. I've stood here before you all, and I took my annual license meeting time to express to you the state of emergency that social equity folks are in. As quickly as I've gotten my annual license, I could soon be closing my doors. And you've heard from a number of my colleagues that are saying the same thing. Um, and we're not seeing any action, you all. I've been coming since two thousand and eighteen, expressing the harms, expressing the mismanagement, showing documentation after documentation, speaking to council, speaking to the mayor's office. And we're still in this situation, the difference is, we're over half a million dollars in debt, I am. And so I come to you today and and Commissioner Mason, you had asked me to come with solutions. Because I know you keep hearing the sad stories. But I would say to look at the two thousand seventeen social equity analysis, and I would ask you commissioners, have you taken the time to read it? Because the city spent three hundred thousand dollars in two thousand seventeen to commission a report on how to budget for the social equity program, what recommendations, the strategies, and not one of them had been fulfilled. Every complaint that you hear us speaking about was in that social equity analysis, and they said all these things would happen. And the DCR and the management of your department has done nothing to follow a recommendation that was already given in two thousand twenty-one. The DCR spent another four hundred dollars, four hundred thousand dollars for a Spark Report, the Commissioner Mason you were a part of. If you go and look at those recommendations, have any of y'all read the Spark Report? Every last single thing that we're talking about in here, isn't that Spark Report for a recommendation, and nothing has been done? Where is the accountability? You guys can't be yes men for the DCR, you have to ask more investigative questions. So I say to you, the DCR will say, they provided rental assistance, but that assistant came seven hundred days after they received state funding. By the time we got help, many of us had already lost our properties, taken on massive debt, or signed predatory contracts. The Business License and Compliance Assistance Program was another disaster. They spent five million dollars with so-called training, but not one of the advisors asked for the resumes. Not one is a dispensary operator, not one. If you look at the webinars, go look online at them. There is nothing practical that I can use on the day-to-day operations. They say they help with workforce development, I'd be damned. I've hired in my community and there was no training. There was no training, look how many millions of dollars, look at Kenan Mahia's controller report. And look how much money they spent with Oakstodam, two point one million dollars. Look how much money they spent with North Star, three point one million dollars. Every single last person that you say here, and you best believe, we are the voice of hundreds.
Thank you, your time is up.
Mr. Vizo, is there anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands, I will make another announcement. If anyone in the virtual meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. There are no raised hands.
Ravin Klein. Good afternoon, I will be speaking on um, general public four and five.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, my name is Ravin, and I'm a single mother and owner and operator of a social equity dispensary called Dope Sugar um, on Melrose, formerly known as sixty-four Hope, um, in District Five. I'm here today to shed light on the harsh reality that small business owners like myself face in this industry. The promise of social equity was supposed to be an opportunity for those harmed by the war on drugs to thrive in the legal market. Um, instead, we are being crushed under excessive taxation and denied access to the fair grants and funding that were meant to support us. Unlike illegal shops that aren't subject to these high costs of doing business, we, the small and equity-owned dispensaries, are drowning in taxes that take fifty percent or more of our earnings. Not only do the illegal shops thrive, as if kicking a dog while it's down isn't enough, they break in and steal from us and then turn around and sell and gain hundred percent margins. Um, we are expected to succeed, yet we, we're given no real financial tools to survive. Without tax relief or equitable funding, we are literally set up to fail. As a single mother, I worked tirelessly, not just to keep my business alive, but to provide for my child and create the generational wealth that the city's sole dream gave me. Um, but how can I do that when my business is being suffocated by these policies, excessive fees, and taxes? Social equity literally means nothing if we aren't given the means to compete fairly. Every month I have to make impossible decisions, do I pay my taxes, my vendors, my employees? Do I keep the lights on, or do I make sure my child has what he needs? I've had to rob Peter to pay Paul, juggling expenses just to keep the doors open. Meanwhile, illicit shops continue to dominate, while small equity-owned businesses like mine are left to struggle and fail. I am now over five hundred thousand dollars in tax debt, three hundred thousand dollars in inventory debt, just trying to keep my business afloat. And before this dream, I had eight hundred plus credit score and no real debt. But I was told that this was to create generational wealth and bring about something good and change. And now that's my new reality, when I could just be slanging on the streets and be okay, and be stacking my bread. I urge this body to take immediate action, reduce the excessive tax burden, create accessible grant programs, and ensure that social equity licenses receive the support we were promised. If not, the only ones left standing will be the illegal markets poisoning the very communities this program was meant to uplift. The city must take action now, implement tax amnesty for outstanding debts, a five-year tax holiday, and step up enforcement against illicit operators. Social equity businesses were meant to have a chance, but right now, we're being set up to fail, and the time for action is now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vizo, is there anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands, I will make another announcement. If anyone in the Zoom meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. There are no raised hands.
Asia Allen.
Good afternoon, everyone, uh, my name is Asia Allen, I will be speaking on general comments and agenda items four and five.
You have three minutes.
My story's gonna sound like everybody else is in this room, but I'm gonna say it again. Um, in the hopes that it will be uh, received today, and we'll get some action out of this. Um, again, my name is Asia Allen, and I am the proud owner of Dope Sugar Losiennega. We are a family-owned business, and um, you know, I'm here today, not only as a social equity operator, but as a human being, you know, I've put everything on the line to be a part of this industry. I followed the rules, I did the work, I believed in the promise that LA made to people like me. But instead of opportunity, I've been met with delays, debt, broken promises, and a system designed to watch me fail. The city ignored its own social equity analysts, or I'm sorry, the roadmap. I mean, you guys chose bureaucracy and red tape over real solutions. The C-grant program, which was supposed to help me, was a disaster. The funds didn't come, and they didn't come when I needed them. By the time they did, the damage was already done. Meanwhile, I got shops down the street, operating without consequence, you know, and I I'm struggling to pay taxes. This isn't just a policy failure, this is personal. I have watched my friends and fellow operators lose their businesses, their minds, their savings, their health, their emotional stability. We're waiting, we're still waiting. I refuse to be another casualty of this system. Like Robin just said, I had an eight hundred credit score. I don't have kids, this is my baby that I'm raising, she is four years old. And imagine being a mother lost, not knowing what to do with your child. I put my blood, sweat, and tears into this, and I'm, I feel destroyed. Accountability is what we're asking for, just honor what you guys intended to do with social equity. Fix the grant programs, please, shut down these illegal dispensaries, it's a, it's a health crisis. There's fentanyl on the streets, guys. Enforce the, you know, the, the, put some action against these predatory practices, these landlords. I paid twenty-five thousand dollars rent when it should be twelve-five, okay? Because of a predatory investor. She dipped on me, they dipped on me, six months, enough is enough, we can't take anymore. We've done everything, we could be on the streets like we, the reason why we're here, right? It was to give reparations for people who had charges, marijuana charges. And we could be still doing that, we're trying to do it the right way, we want to show the people in our community what it looks like to be a stand-up citizen in America. But if we don't have your hand in this, we're not gonna succeed.
Thank you, your time is up.
Mr. Vizo, is there, are there any callers in the queue?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, Armon, I can't read this last name, so I'm not gonna try.
Good afternoon, my name is Armon Sherdeagan, I'll be speaking on a general number five, number four and five.
You have three minutes.
I had a beautiful speech and some educational speech here for you guys, but because it's two minutes, I'm just gonna skip it and just get to the point. You guys feel the pain, right, in this room? I hope you do. I'm a founder and a partner in Rebaud, and we operate for social equity stores. It's very, very painful. We can't keep this up. And it's very simple to fix it, shut down the illegal market. If you're not capable of doing it, invite us, we'll educate you, we'll teach you. We'll show you how it's done. I'm really shaking here because the anger in me. How blind are you? Thank you.
Mr. Vizo, are there any callers in the queue?
There are no raised hands.
At this time, general public comment and single or multiple agenda items is now closed. We are on to item two on the agenda. Elected office and neighborhood council representative presentations. This is just a reminder that any representative neighborhood councils who have filed a resolution or a community impact statement with the city clerk, which relates to any item on the agenda, will be given time to speak during the agenda item itself. Please provide a copy of the filed statement or a resolution to the commission executive assistant. Any neighborhood council representative speaking on behalf of their neighborhood council must provide a letter on their letterhead stating the neighborhood council's position on the matter. Absent any neighborhood council documentation, comments may still be provided during the public comment period. Item number three is commission business. Commissioners, you have, should have received an advanced calendar in front of you with our future meeting dates. Please take a look and advise at this time if there are any planned absences.
Um, President Mason, can we pause for a second? So for item number two, we have uh, the neighborhood council member that was going to speak during this item. Ms. Kathy. And we also have someone from the council district office, uh, four.
Okay, that's a different use of item number two, we typically allow them to speak on the item itself, so we're making an exception this time? Because item two is just a general announcement procedurally.
I think that this is, this is Emily Wada, Deputy City Attorney, I think that this is an area of uh, interpretation in our rules and operating procedures, so if you would like to uh, take a break right now and discuss that, we can, but um, could be said that she's talking on agenda item number two.
Well, we've already made the commitment, so I'll go ahead and allow. Ms. Guyton, you may approach.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon, community.
My name is Kathy Guyton, I am a member of Empowerment Congress West Neighborhood Council. I am also the co-chair of the dip, of our cannabis regulation committee, and I'm here to present the community impact statement that we voted on. Empowerment Congress West Area Neighborhood Development Council submits its community impact statement to highlight the detrimental effects of unlicensed cannabis dispensaries in our community and to advocate for immediate action in support of licensed social equity operators. Um, the first thing is public safety and community harm. The unchecked proliferation of unlicensed cannabis dispensaries in South Los Angeles has created an alarming public safety crisis. These unregulated businesses not only undermine the legal market, but also contribute to the sale of untested and potential harmful cannabis products posing serious health risks to consumers. This is especially alarming in light of the recent deaths related to fentanyl, fentanyl-laced products. Increased criminal activity, including violent crime, robberies, and illicit transactions around these businesses. Decreased neighborhood quality of life due to loitering, traffic issues, and unregulated operations. We are alarmed at the recent testimony by the captain of the LAPD Gang and Narcotics Division at the February fourth City Council Government Operations Committee meeting. The captain stated numerous times that despite the city's stated commitment to enforcement, these illegal storefronts remain operational with little to no intervention. Meanwhile, legally licensed cannabis businesses in our community, many of which, many of which are black-owned social equity operators, struggle to survive under constantly changing regulations and immense tax burdens. Economic impact on social equity businesses. Social equity license holders were granted licenses with the promise of economic opportunity and restitution for communities disproportionate, disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. However, their ability to operate successfully is being severely undermined by unfair competition, excessive taxation and fees, and regulatory barriers. As a result, many of these businesses have closed or are struggling to stay open while illicit while illicit operators continue to erode the integrity of the city's regulatory framework. Immediate action requested. To address this urgent crisis, we urge the Cannabis Regulation Committee to take the following immediate steps. Aggressive enforcement against illegal dispensaries. Prioritize targeted crackdowns on unlicensed businesses in South Los Angeles. Hold landlords accountable for knowingly leasing to illegal operators. Number two, tax relief and financial assistance for social equity businesses. Advocate for tax amnesty and a tax holiday for social equity licensees, suspending city cannabis taxes for five years. Establish a low-interest loan and grant program to support social equity businesses. Number three, joint presentation at public hearing. We requested that this issue be agendized for this meeting. That did not happen. We will be requesting it again. And we also seek to, where we seek to present testimony, data, and community concerns to highlight the urgency of this issue. Number four, city council engagement. The commission should collaborate with the city council to schedule a hearing on the enforcement failures and economic relief for social equity licensed businesses. In conclusion, South Los Angeles has become a hotspot for illegal cannabis activity while our legal, social equity businesses face a crisis. This is not just an economic issue. It's a matter of public safety and community well-being. Without immediate enforcement and policy intervention, the very businesses the city set out to empower will disappear. Empowerment Congress West Neighborhood Council stands for the legal cannabis operators in our community and urges the commission to take swift action to uphold the integrity of the industry, protect consumers, and ensure economic justice for social equity licensees. We look forward to presenting our concerns at the upcoming Cannabis Regulation Committee meeting where we made the request and it was not fulfilled. And we welcome collaboration on solutions to this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item three, commission business. Back to the advanced calendar. You should have reviewed it by now. Please advise if you have any planned absences for the meetings. Hearing no planned absences, we are moving on to approval of the meetings. We were sent the minutes of the meeting of March 6, 2025 for review. Do I have a motion to approve?
This is Vice President Nash. I move to approve the minutes of the March 6, 2025 meeting.
Commissioner Melendez, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Vizel. Please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye, I was absent, but I reviewed the audio file.
Thank you. President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Are there any commission announcements or updates? Moving on to future agenda requests. Commissioners, are there any future agenda requests? At this time, this is President Mason. At this time, I'm going to reiterate what is stated in the commission rules and operating procedures under section 4.0. It indicates that the president shall set the agenda. At the February 6, 2025 meeting, I did request that taxation be on this agenda. For reasons unknown to me and other members of this commission, that did not happen. So I am going to again request that taxation be placed on a future agenda within the next 30 days. Moving on to item four, we have a report from the Assistant Executive Director. Mr. Colleen?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Jason Clean, Assistant Executive Director. I only have a brief report for you today. DCR opened the social equity individual applicant verification filing period for calendar year 2025 on this past Monday. It will remain open until 4:00 PM on Tuesday, April 1st. We have, we've done numerous webinars. That information is available on our website. Folks that were verified in calendar year 2019 or 2022 do not have to be re-verified in order to register for the December 2025 lottery. Our communications team will have more information available after we close the verification filing period related to when we will open the lottery registration process and when we will administer the lottery. And as those dates get finalized, of course, we'll bring them back before this body. DCR continues to finalize the reconciliation of the 2025 license renewal process. As this body knows, the renewal process extended through the month of February and ended on February 28th. We still see mailed-in payments and other payments trickling in. So we have not been able to close the books on the renewal process. And then, of course, to President Mason's point about the taxation issue, there were a number of items that the Office of Finance is working on in order to differentiate the tax liabilities associated with general applicants and social equity applicants. That analysis has not come back to the department yet, but we do anticipate we will have it within 30 days and we'll make sure that that item does get agendized within the next 30 days. My apologies. And I did circulate a copy of the AMIC Foster Wheeler Report, which was attached to the Chief Legislative Analyst Report back in 2017. That was the initial policy study that was presented to the council by the Chief Legislative Analyst Office about social equity and different things that the city could do. So we do have that report available for the commissioners that, of course, were not part of the original commission and that can be circulated for your reading. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Assistant Director Colleen?
Commissioner Farmby. Jason, how, how quickly can we get a hold, access to that report?
The Cannabis Social Equity Report?
Yeah.
We can have an email to you as soon as this meeting is over.
Thank you.
This is Vice President Nash. One of the public speakers mentioned a second report. Said that the city spent $400,000 on. Can we also, I believe it was in 2018?
The Spark Report.
I'm sorry?
It's called the Spark Report.
Can we get that as well?
Yes. Technical question. Would the commissioners prefer if commission staff emailed once with the report that I've already pulled up and separately with the additional reports? Or do you just want one email breaking down the various reports and providing the links? I'm going to defer to you.
One more time?
Would you like one email with all of the social equity program-related reports from the different analysis from the vendors? Or would you like separate emails specific to each of the various reports?
It can be one report with all of the links. I think that would be easiest for the commissioners.
Understood.
Any other questions for Assistant Director Colleen?
Thank you.
All righty, then we are moving on. The item number five, which is a report from the Social Equity Program Director.
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you so much for your diligent, thoughtful considerations during the annual licensing process. Today, my report is going to include a summary of the business licensing compliance and the accomplishments and deliverables of the cannabis equity grant for local jurisdictions, our seed rental assistance grant program allocations, our pro bono and low bono business service. Oh my God, okay. Just kicked me out. All right. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay. Now, I don't know what's going on with the computer here. It's kicking me out. The business, the BLC program was launched in 2021. Now it's designed to provide educational resources and business development training for applicants and licensees to navigate the licensed cannabis landscape in the Los Angeles market. It provides training for workforce development initiatives and offers financial and legal assistance. Now I'd like to share some highlights of our business development and training program. The following is a snapshot of our resources and educational content that the BLC program has provided applicants and licensees to date. Next slide. Go back one, please. Yes. So we have an online learning management system that features live webinars with subject matter experts, self-paced virtual contact, content on a broad variety of topics, and an advanced workforce development program. I don't know if the internet is going off here or what. My computer is frozen. Let me get the, my mouse. Maybe that'll be better. This will be better, everybody. Okay, here we go. Okay, our learning management system. In 2022, we launched two programs. Our pro bono and low bono legal services in partnership with the LA County Bar Association and the Seed Rental Assistance Grant Programs. Both programs have become vehicles to provide financial legal support to hundreds of verified equity applicants and licensees. In addition to those programs, in 2023, we launched a collaborative stakeholder advisory work group committee that provides opportunities for an in-depth discussion that yield actionable insights. Additionally, in regards to outreach and engagement in 2022, the BLC program created a monthly newsletter entitled The Cana Dispatch. Next slide. Just for some additional data. To date, the social equity program has provided 183 hours of self-paced video content in our online management system. That's self-paced. Folks can go in there and listen to these educational modules at their own pace. We posted 96 live webinars and Q and A sessions. We have 21 new webinars that are scheduled from now until December 2025. We've hosted four Lunch and Learns on Seed Grant Rental Assistance. We've published 37 Cana Dispatch newsletters. We've organized the DCR Stakeholder Equity Advisory Work Group and we've held five meetings to date. We've hosted nine in-person events with over 2,000 attendees. The BLC program is currently working on relaunching the jobs board, which at its height had 198 listings during its peak in 2023. We should have that back online by the end of this year. Next slide. The city of Los Angeles has issued 500, 352 social equity licenses across five different activities. Retail, delivery, non-bodal, manufacturing, distribution, and cultivation. This represents 20% of all licenses. Next slide. The SEP team manages content for our BLC compliance program on DCR's official website. These are just some of the, this is it. Here, applicants can access our online management system. They can access webinar registration, DCR updates, and more. This space also functions as a portal to access our one-on-one coaching via Appointlet, a free and low-cost legal assistance registration. DCR has a monthly Cana Dispatch newsletter and all Cana Dispatch archives, video archives, and upcoming event information can be found there. The general public has the ability to remain informed on SEP news and updates by subscribing to our online social media presence, which such as LinkedIn, Facebook, Instagram, and visiting us online at canadis.lacity.org or emailing dcr SEP at la city dot org. Next slide. This is an overview of the Learning Management System, or LMS. It's available exclusively to verified equity applicants. There's over 180 hours of self-paced educational content, 96 live webinars, including 13 beachside chat and Q and A sessions, eight learning pathways. This digital platform offers a comprehensive suite of information on topics such as cannabis marketing and branding, the rules and regs of marketing, insurance requirements, commercial contracts negotiation, track and trace, licensing procedures, cannabis technology applications, workforce development, training, and much more. As a matter of fact, we hosted the first webinar for 2025 on Tuesday, March 18th, entitled Mastering Cannabis Tax Compliance with subject matter expert Patrick Finnegan. Targeted course contact was developed based on feedback from our equity community and the stakeholder work group sessions. Next slide. As part of our workforce development training, the BLC program offers one-on-one coaching sessions in 30-minute increments with subject matter experts of their choice. Currently, we have 17 subject matter experts. And the topics include, but they're not limited to, business planning, the rules and regs of cannabis marketing, accounting, insurance, tax planning, employee onboarding, licensing, and compliance operations, and more. To date, 176 applicants have scheduled one-on-one coaching sessions. For fiscal year 2025, the social equity program has budgeted for up to 2,000 hours available exclusively to equity applicants. DCR and the team are extremely thankful to our continued partnership with the experts who offer their time to provide personalized business professional workforce development coaching. This is another valuable resource exclusive to social equity applicants. Next slide. Now, access to affordable legal assistance, we know, continues to serve as a major barrier to entering and staying compliant in the legal cannabis market. To address this, we've partnered with the LA County Bar Association's Cannabis Law Division to make pro bono and low bono, or low-cost legal services available to all social equity entrepreneurs who have passed the pre-application stage. The pro bono program offers 10 hours of free legal services and the low bono offers low-cost legal services that allows qualified applicants to receive up to 30 hours of legal advice at a discounted rate of $35 an hour. So that's 40 hours. We've gotten feedback, we know that that's not enough, but 40 hours will get your leasing agreements looked at and your ownership agreements looked at. And it'll give you an idea of what you need to do before you sign. And we really encourage people to take advantage of that resource. Outside of this program, as we know, attorney's fees can range from $350 to $1,200 an hour. And for many folks, that time affordability is monumental. To date, we've referred 143 business owners through the LA County Bar Association. We have communicated to all applicants by email and text. If you're not receiving any communication and you believe you're eligible, please contact us at dcr SEP at la city dot org. Next slide, please. And this is the sign, the sign-up form. It's just a one-page. Next slide. This is a screenshot of our job board that I was speaking about. At its peak, we offered 198 listings in 2023. The beauty of that job board is that we vetted all of the business owners before we put them on the job board to make sure that they were in good standing and they had a license before so that, you know, workers would be assured that they were working at a licensed cannabis dispensary. Next slide, please. DCR launched the Official Equity Stakeholder Advisory Committee in 2024. The goal of this advisory group is to ascertain the efficacy of the BLC program. We seek candid feedback and suggestions from users and recipients of our resources and program. We're looking for information that will assist us as we embark on creating new business development practices and resources. We seek information that will inform us as to the needs and challenges that entrepreneurs face in real time. We have participants from all license type except lab testing. We meet quarterly to constructively discuss the successes and challenges of the program. Next slide. Now, in order for a seat on our advisory committee, we required that folks completed five hours of training in the learning management system, be a recipient of at least one financial grant, and attended a minimum of three webinars. There's two groups of 12 participants who were selected to attend the advisory meeting that are held quarterly. To date, we've had five meetings. Next slide. Our Cannah Dispatch. The SEP team releases a monthly newsletter that is filled with valuable information about DCR, the BLC program benefits and resources, application filing periods, applicable state and federal legislative news, new LMS course offerings, current cannabis developments across the country, and more. The newsletter also provides an opportunity to spotlight our equity entrepreneurs, their personal triumphs, lessons learned, and highlights of their businesses. You can sign up for the newsletter on the DCR website at cannabis.lacity.gov. Next slide. DCR has now hosted several of the largest in-person businesses of its kind in the country. In 2019, we had Phase II Compliance Training Workshop at the Madrid Hotel Theater. In 2020, we had the Cannabis Tax Workshop at Deaton Hall. In 2021, there were no external events due to COVID. In 2022, we had Grow 2022 Cannabis Career Fair at LA Trade Tech in March. We also had the LA Cannabis Unite in downtown LA at the Mayfair Hotel. 500 folks attended that. In 2023, we had Cannabis and Capital Investor Networking Forum at the LA Convention Center, where 600 people attended. And we also had the Los Angeles Cannabis Unite in the summer at the Mayfair Hotel. Again, we had 500 attendees. We hosted four Lunch and Learn webinars on the rental assistance grant process. And we provided those dates. In 2024, we decided to host smaller intimate in-person training. We had an inaugural Equity Week Training Summit at Amundson Senior Center, and we had our training summit. It was Pitch Perfect called Pitch Perfect at Friendship Auditorium in South LA. For the next few slides, I'll share some pictures from a few of our events. Next slide, please. December 3rd in 2022. This is a, these are some pictures of the first Cannabis Unite. The event was a night to commemorate and celebrate social equity operators, stakeholders, and the cannabis and cannabis workforce. As I said, 500 people attended and had access to networking opportunities with industry experts, manufacturers tabled at the event, providing the ability to market their products to retail owners and more. Next slide. February 2023, we had the Cannabis and Capital. It was an investor networking forum at the Convention Center. Equity entrepreneurs were given access to information on grant assistance, business planning guidance, tools and resources for the social equity program. We had panel discussions covering topics such as perfecting your pitch deck, getting to yes, and preparing for investment, for the investment journey. Next slide. This is a picture of the Cannabis United. It was a summer edition at the Mayfair Hotel. People were also allowed to get free headshots for their, for their website. We had a DCR room that offered direct assistance from participating state agencies. The Agricultural Labor Relations Board was there in EDD.
Dr. Brown, I'm gonna stop you for just a moment. I'm going to acknowledge that emotions and frustrations in this room are high today. I don't want to put anybody out. So I'm just gonna ask you to please maintain a level of respect while she's presenting, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Slide, next slide, please. Equity Week was a training summit. This was an inaugural event that included in-person training, networking, and one-on-one assistance from DCR staff. This event included presentations by cannabis expert, business attorney Zachary Knox. He went over business structures, marketing strategy, investment, business planning. 75 people attended that small intimate training event. Next slide. This event was entitled Pitch Perfect, and it featured an expert investor, Jake Kuzerek. He's a Los Angeles-based advisor and investor in the cannabis space. Jake's presentation to 75 attendees focused on helping businesses increase their odds of getting funding and fostering partnerships by creating a top-notch pitch deck. This event allowed attendees to present their pitch deck and get live feedback in real time. We're proud to have hosted these successful events to afford the community opportunities. We've had great feedback, and we hope to curate additional business development events and opportunities in the coming year. Next slide, please. The SEED Grant Program utilizes funds from the state's cannabis equity grants for local jurisdictions. Now, with these funds made available through GoBiz, the city of Los Angeles has dedicated $14 million towards social equity entrepreneurs' development. It's called SEED. That's the acronym for SEED. And the grant program to, the grants program has helped over 200 small business owners. In 2021, DCR received $6 million in funds that could be spent on all of the allowable uses. I would like to remind the commission that with the funding for 2022 Cannabis Equity Grant, we provided 1,275 applicants were verification fee waivers. Also, 100 applicants received fee waivers for Phase III Retail Round Two. In 2023, we developed and launched our inaugural Rental Assistance Program where 161 business owners in partnership with Elevate Impact LA dis-sued $5 million for two separate tiers, SEED I and SEED II funding. And, yes. In 2024, 184 applicants received $1.5 million in grant funding for annual fee waivers. Now, as for the 2025-2026 grant cycle, I'm very pleased to announce that DCR has been awarded $3.5 million in grant funding. DCR will use this grant funding to cover annual application fees, licensing renewal application fees, environmental review fees, which include categorical exemption fees, environmental analysis review, county clerk notices of exemption, filing fees, and some other fees. On Tuesday, March 18th, the Government Operations and Budget and Finance Committees approved the acceptance of the grant. The item is now pending full council approval. Next slide. No, next slide. Okay. I'd like to share briefly some details regarding the 2023 SEED Rental Assistance. This was the first time we had a Rental Assistance Grant Program. Grant funds were sanctioned to be used for the following purposes: to pay rent or a security deposit pursuant to a freely executed commercial lease for the purposes of operating a licensed storefront retail location. Or you could use it to finance up to one month of back rent. Or you could use it, you could use it to secure a binding letter of intent by paying the required security deposit. Or you could use it to assist with build-out costs or construction costs or renovation costs. SEED I, we utilized $4 million in funding to provide financial assistance for Phase III Retail Round One, Retail Licensees. As part of the application process, we required an educational component where applicants assessed the learning management system and completed three courses on business planning, leasing, and contract negotiations. Business formation for retail owners, they received up to $50,000 in three dispersments. The first dispersment, the first course requirement was commercial leases and contract negotiations, Part One and Two. After they completed that, and they received $25,000. After the second dispersment, the course requirement was business planning and operational development. They received $15,000. And the third dispersment, the course requirement, you could do an elective, and then you got the $10,000. Next slide, please. And for SEED 2.0, this rental assistance utilized $1 million, and this was for non-retail that had passed a pre-application stage and were seeking temporary approval. They had to have compliant property and have an executed lease or a binding letter of intent. The SEED II applicants were required to fulfill just one educational course requirement on commercial leases and contracts negotiations, Part One and Two, and they received $10,000 dispersment. Now, all funds at that grant have been processed. All eligible retail business owners did receive their three dispersments of $50K for retail. There was $1.254 million left over from the $5 million. 129 applicants were eligible for the prorata dispersment check, which was $9,223 that has been processed. Of that 83, of that 129, 83 received ACH transfers, and the remaining 46 business owners are receiving checks. As of today, 28 folks have picked up their checks, and there are 17 more checks to be dispersed. Now, the administrative burdens that DCR had to comply with from the Office of Finance and the Controller's Office were Herculean, which resulted in a six-and-a-half-month delay in receiving prorata portion of the grant. We know it caused an enormous amount of angst and frustration, and for that, I'm sorry. Now, before I discuss the goals of the upcoming year, I would like to mention that this PowerPoint presentation has been hyperlinked to most of the slides directly to the BLC website for your review. Next slide. I'd like to talk about some of the goals for 2026. As we continue to expand and offer our business licensing and technical assistance program, the social equity team, we're really working diligently to provide well-developed and designed curriculum and opportunities to meet people where they are. In 2026, the SEP team plans to expand our online educational content and pro bono and low bono legal services program with the LA County Bar Association. We plan to pursue educational, I'm sorry, we plan to pursue additional public-private grant funds and partnerships. We will continue to host more in-person educational and technology, technical training events, and develop best practices and resources with regards to consumption lounges and cannabis temporary event licenses. We plan to provide career development services to job seekers and employers. Moving forward with the imminent budget cuts and the deficits that the city is facing, we plan to create more resources and programming that we can develop in-house. And with that, I'll turn it back over to President Mason. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners. Are there any questions for Dr. Brown?
This is Vice President Nash. You mentioned the job board a couple of times, and what I heard from your remarks is that it's currently not active.
Yes.
What happened?
Yes. One of our vendors had the job board, and he had proprietary technology. He died. And so we didn't have access to that anymore, and so we have to bring it in-house. And so we're working on that, but we have to, again, go through all the bureaucratic hurdles with our IT department with, you know, with, with the city. And so we're working on that now. We're hoping to have it built out by the end of this year. It was a really good resource because we vetted all of the businesses. So workers had confidence that they were, you know, applying to dispensaries that were licensed. And we helped them with their applications. We helped them with their resumes. We also helped the employers in terms of onboarding and the good hiring requirements. So that's part of our workforce development.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Farmy. How you doing, Mr. Brian? In the slides, you had spoke to 176 applicants that have scheduled the coaching session?
Yes.
Is that the actual number of folks who have gone through and taken advantage? Or those are folks in a pipeline?
No, that's who've taken advantage of it.
Okay.
And currently, we have 17 subject matter experts, and they can go in and have more than one 30-minute session. They can have multiple sessions as much as possible. And they can talk to the experts in terms of anything that they want, and they walk them through whatever their issues are.
Okay, and just follow, let me. Can you tell me the difference between low bono and pro bono?
Pro bono is free, no cost to business owners, and pro bono means low. We have a partnership with the LA County Bar Association, and we supplement. So folks only pay $35 an hour, and we pay the difference of $275 an hour. So folks only come out of their pocket for $35 an hour. I don't know where in the country you can get legal services for $35 an hour. And I just hope people take more advantage of that.
Thank you.
This is President Mason. Can we go back to the slideshow? I would know it when I see it. I'm sorry.
What's it in reference to? Maybe I can help.
It was, it had four pictures on it that talked about the different modules that were being offered.
Oh, yes, our LMS. Hold on. Go back. No. That's it, that's it. Go back, right there, the one before this. No. That, that, yeah, yes. These are just some of the snapshots of the courses on the, on the platform.
And I'm going to request that a syllabus or the curriculum for each of these modules be made available to the commissioners. I can't really dive into it the way I want to without seeing that, but I, this doesn't tell me exactly what the topics are that are being taught. And I've heard a lot of feedback from the community with respect to accounting practices, with respect to learning entrepreneurial skills, and the feeling being that the support is lacking in that regard.
President Mason, we can give you the sign-in password so you can go in yourself and go through it to see the efficacy of it and how user-friendly it is. And each class has a description of the course before you take it. It gives a brief description of each, of each module. So I'll give that to all of the commissioners. So you can go in and, you know, I'm interested to get feedback to see how easy it is to navigate. The classes, the courses usually run between 20 minutes to 50 minutes per, per module. And we have like Accounting I, II, and III, like Accounting 101 and Advanced Accounting Practices. So I will make sure you have that today.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Brown? Well, it's been a while since we've heard from you. So thank you for your presentation today. We're moving on to Item Six on the agenda, which is DCR Core Record Number 310162. The applicant is SDF11LLC. The recommendation is to receive and file, and no action is necessary. Therefore, this item is received and filed.
President Mason? This is the item, is this the item? Give me one second.
City Four wants to speak on Item Six?
Yes, they do, and they are on the line.
We're not there yet? We're not there yet? Oh, yes, we are. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Caller with phone number ending in six nine zero three, please state your name and whether you are with the council members office.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Cannabis Regulation Commissioners. My name is Armita Reyes, Planning and Housing Deputy for Council District Four. I'm here to, today to speak on behalf of Council Member Ramon's office on this item and annual license applications for SDF eleven LLC located at six two two three Franklin Avenue in Council District Four. I just heard the commissioner share that it was going to be noted and filed, so I just wanted to um, be able to kind of give um, some information. But with that information, I'll just get to the end um, and just wanted to really thank the commission for taking into consideration all the concerns that a lot of neighbors have already shared with you all. Um, and yeah, just thank you so much for your time and work on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is DCR Core Record Number 101797. The applicant is PHC Facilities Incorporated. The recommendation is to receive and file and no action is necessary. Therefore, the matter is received and filed. Item number eight is DCR Core Record Number 320017. The applicant is Hwood California LLC to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at one five zero three North Mariposa Avenue. Mr. Vizel, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we did not receive a community impact statement for this from the neighborhood council.
Thank you. Then at this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Jason Colleen, Assistant Executive Director, here to present item number eight for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. This item went before the commission on February sixth, 2025 and was continued to today's agenda to allow for additional time for the applicant and the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council um, to engage with one another. Um, both the applicant and the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council have submitted their own letters to this body. I have reviewed those letters and available, and I am available for questions. Additionally, during the last public hearing, there were questions from commissioners related to LEMC um, section one oh five, which is the location ordinance. Um, so I did update our presentation to include some screenshots to hopefully make this conversation a little bit easier for us today. Um, DCR Core Record Number 320017 is associated with Hwood California LLC. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail cannabis, commercial cannabis activity. Um, the business is located at one five zero three North Mariposa Avenue in the Hollywood Community Plan Area, which is located in Council District thirteen. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of May thirty-first, 2023. The applicant also has a state provisional license, which is C10 dash zero 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 one three one three dash LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales. Um, there are state licenses active through May twenty-ninth of 2025. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for class one and class thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions applied, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. Um, we know our compliance team is available. Um, there was an inspection done of this location. Um, the compliance team did receive a complaint associated with the land use review. Um, we resolved that complaint back in twenty twenty-three. Um, but they can speak to the inspection and any corrective actions that the applicant needed to take as it relates to the inspection. Um, but first I would just like to run through some of the screenshots um, of the premises. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the applicant's proposed business premises location was deemed compliant with the requirements of municipal code section one oh five oh two C. Um, that allows for us to do the initial pre-application review to review whether or not the sensitive uses are outside of a seven-hundred-foot radius of the proposed location. And that determination is based on the publicly available information on the verification date. So to the extent that um, the school or um, did any modifications to the lots of the parcels to ultimately make a larger parcel, that would have no impact on how the department reviews this information for today's presentation. Next slide, please. Um, secondly, the distance between any commercial cannabis activity and any sensitive use with exclusive use of the parcel upon which it is located shall be the horizontal distance measured in a straight line without regard to intervening structures from the closest exterior wall of the commercial cannabis business to the closest parcel boundary of the sensitive use. Um, next slide, please. This is a screenshot from Google Street View um, showing the Trace Hollywood, um, which is the DBA for this location. Um, as you can see, when you look at it, there is effectively like a covered parking spot or driveway. So the actual building where the commercial cannabis activity is occurring does not extend to the end of the aerial view of the property. So effectively, the building cuts off where a parking space would be. So as we get into the next sets of screenshots, you'll notice that the measurement isn't being taken from the highest corner or the wall that has no actual activity happening next to it. It's being measured from that corner where the end of the storefront is to the parcel line of the sensitive use. Uh, next slide, please. This is from our zoning information map access system. The pink are commercial zones. If you are to look at the bottom left-hand corner, you will see a T-shaped um, building on a parcel at the corner of Sunset and Mariposa. It is at the bottom of the column, which is the first full column. The blue parcel that is one column over um, and towards like the middle of it has a blue boundary, that is the parcel boundary for the address where the school is located. Um, the school is located in a residentially zoned area and it's a residence, residentially zoned property. Next slide, please. Um, as part of the conversation last time, um, there was conversation about the lots, the parcels, APN numbers and other stuff. Um, so you can see that from the closest exterior wall of where the commercial cannabis activity occurs to the parcel line where the school is located, it is over seven hundred feet. So it does comply. You can see at the top of the left-hand image, two addresses. Um, one five one seven North Alexandria and one five one five North Alexandria. Um, that is the parcel in which the school is located. If you go to the middle image, you will see on the next parcel that has a legal address of one five one one North Alexandria Avenue. And then on the right-hand most image, you will see that that parcel also has two different legal addresses. It's one five zero five North Alexandria and one five zero nine North Alexandria. So as you can see, these are each distinct parcels with distinct legal addresses. The parcel that is on the right-hand most side is a parking lot, so there are no buildings on that. Um, I do want to point your attention that if you look at each of the images um, under the address legal section, um, the third from the bottom of that section is an area called lot. Um, the description of a lot is a lot is a name or number designation within the tract and block that was recorded with the Los Angeles County Recorder for the parcel. So you'll notice in each of those images that have distinct addresses, each of them have a distinctive lot number because they're distinctive parcels. Uh, next slide, please. Vice President Nash asked a question about whether or not um, these properties that are all interrelated there have the same parcel number, even though we don't measure based on parcel numbers or just look at the parcel number to do the analysis. I did indicate at the last public hearing that there are different parcel numbers for different locations and buildings on what the community has referred to as the school. So you'll notice that the image on the left is where the school is located, so I've highlighted the accessory parcel number for that. Um, that parcel number, I believe, ends in three eight. And then on the right-hand side, you can see on the same set of, you know, parcels that are grouped together as part of this larger school complex, you can see a, an accessory parcel number that ends in one seven. So there are different parcels for different buildings that are located kind of on what the community has referred to as this school complex. Um, next slide, please. Um, this is a zoomed-in view of the aerial. So you can kind of see what the community is saying the school complex is. You can see that you have distinct parcel lines here. Um, and you can see that that southernmost parcel that I was talking about, there are no buildings on it. It's used as a parking lot. Next slide, please. Um, again, this is um, looking at a different parcel um, as part of that group of parcels, which shows the different APN number and it's not associated with the legal address for the school. Next slide, please. Um, this is the official um, image and measurements where, when we were interacting with the school and the neighborhood council, we said even if the code gave us the ability to consider those two adjacent parcels, the school, and we measured from the closest exterior wall of the commercial cannabis business to the closest exterior wall of that building, it's still just outside of seven hundred feet, so it still would be a compliant location. And this is one of those examples where the applicant actually hired a land surveyor to do the measurements before they secured the location. Um, so they, in their report, did mention that as well. And we did determine that it met the requirements. So based on the department's review at that time, based on a re-review of it, I believe that this, this applicant does fully comply with the requirements under LEMC Code Section one oh five oh two. Next slide, please. Um, this is the track map that is filed. Um, you can see that it's dated 2019. So you can see each of those parcels are distinct parcels as part of this track map. Uh, next slide. And this slide, of course, has the department's recommendations, which are listed in the report. If the commissioners have questions for the Compliance and Enforcement Division, um, Rocky Wiles and her team are available. And DCR does recommend the commission adopt the recommendations included in DCR's staff report and approve the issuance of the annual license. Um, that concludes my presentation for this item. And if you would like, I would invite up the Compliance and Enforcement Division.
Before Compliance and Enforcement, Commissioner Nash has a question.
Yeah, um, can we go back?
I'm sorry, Vice President Nash has a question.
Can we go back to the slide that had the three separate views of the parcels? Thank you. Which of these is the department relying on?
The image that is on the left-hand most slide, um, you can see the blue parcel boundary is the lot associated with the legal address for the school. Um, we measured from the closest exterior wall of the building to the parcel line for the business. Along that entire stretch of parcel line, um, it's all over seven hundred feet. When we did it on the other slide, just to indicate that the exterior wall of the business was outside of seven hundred feet of the building itself, we used the middle image. And then closer to the end of the slide presentation, you'll see a measurement from the exterior wall of the cannabis business to the closest corner, and that indicates that it was still outside of a seven-hundred-foot radius.
Okay. Now, the, the first slide from, starting from the left has what appears to me to be half of that building um, highlighted in blue. Uh, what is the actual status of that building?
I, sorry, Commissioner, I do not understand your question.
Um, you see the building on the left-hand slide?
Yes, sir.
You see the building and there's the blue box? And it starts halfway on that building?
Yes, sir.
Why does it start halfway on the building and not at the beginning of the building?
The blue outline is the parcel that the school is located on. So that building runs across multiple distinct legal parcels. So the parcel that is legally associated with the address for the school based on publicly available records is the blue box on the left-hand side of the image.
Now, the part of that building that is not within that blue box, what is there?
There are offices, there are other things going on. They have different legal addresses.
Is it also owned by the school?
It is owned by the church that owns the other properties adjacent, the other buildings adjacent to it, and the church is located across the street.
And does the church also own the area that's included with the, in, within the blue box on the left slide?
Yes, it does.
That's all I have for now.
This is Commissioner Farmby. And Jason, in slide, the slide number three to the right appears to be a parking lot. Does the church own that as well, that parcel?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, Compliance and Enforcement?
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Hector Ali Khan, Supervisor for the Enforcement Division. Um, in regards to fifteen oh three North Mariposa, Hwood California LLC, a compliance inspection was conducted at this property on August twenty-eighth, 2024. A notice to correct was issued on October ninth, 2024. During the inspection, seven deficiencies were identified. At present, six of the seven have been corrected. Um, to go over the list, uh, one of the deficiencies was a use of trees Hollywood that wasn't registered with DCR. Since then, they have submitted a mod and corrected that. The display of license, the neighborhood liaison information out front of the building did not match what was in the record. They submitted a mod and corrected that on the record. The identification of employees, the employee's badge did not have the DCR Core Record Number. Since then, they provided proof and corrected that issue as well. There was graffiti identified on the front-facing gate facing Mariposa Avenue. They have provided confirmation and corrected that as well. Um, there was an issue with the surveillance equipment. The timestamp displayed was incorrect. They did provide corrective action and that has been signed off as well. There was an issue with product inventory and sales. It was just uh, just similar to what happens in most places. The sales were off from metric and what was on staff by one just meant they needed update at the end of the day, which they did with metric, and that has been confirmed as corrected. The remaining item is a business premises diagram, did not match what was in the DCR record, but they have submitted a mod. An invoice has been generated. They're given thirty days of big payment. Once payment is received, DCR Licensing will review that and um, progress appropriately. That invoice was dated March third, 2025, so they have till April second to receive payment. So it's in process right now. So one of the seven remains. Any questions? Any questions?
Commissioner Farmby, have you had any communication or any confirmation around um, the, the, the modifications for number six at all? I mean, I know it's until the second, but have they?
Yeah, on, on the record, they have submitted the four zero zero one form, which is the modification request form that's required. And they have submitted the updated business premises diagram on. So all the documents are in there. It's just a matter of waiting for payment and, and doing the, the review of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to deliberations.
President Mason?
I'm sorry, we're on to the applicant's presentation. They must be on the line.
I don't see a raised hand, but I do have, um, was provided a number and I see them on the line. If the applicant's representative is on the virtual meeting, please dial star nine to raise your hand. Caller with phone number ending in nine seven one seven, please state your name and how you represent the applicant.
Uh, hi, Commissioners, uh, this is Rigo with H Wood, California. Uh, we've been operating in the community since twenty twenty three with zero incidents. Uh, we're a, a well-priced, uh, well-stocked option for the community. Um, we've, uh, as I said, we've been there. Uh, we're a small shop. We see like, uh, you know, s- small amount of traffic, but, uh, we're growing every day. Um, we've, uh, reached out to the, uh, neighborhood council on several occasions, um, because of this, uh, mission interpretation of the distance issue. We've had some, uh, like, kind of pushback from them. But, uh, other than that, we really, as I said, haven't had any incidents. And I'm here to answer, uh, any question that the Commissioners might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Hi, this is Commissioner Farmby. Um, have you all engaged with the community since the last me- uh, meeting?
Uh, we did. We, we emailed, we emailed the neighborhood council, and then they had us appear before their, uh, their plum committee, uh, which we did. We gave them a presentation, and then they gave us their grievances, uh, and that was it.
I'm sorry, can you repeat? They gave you, um, they give you, what did you mention?
Like, they, they, um, we, we gave them our, like, uh, we met, we, uh, met before them via Zoom. Uh, and then, uh, they, they gave us their grievances, which is this, uh, this distance, this distance issue. And then, um, uh, last time, uh, Mr. Colleen mentioned their, um, their, uh, the email system was down. So when we emailed the neighborhood, when we attempted to at the, uh, in the previous meetings, I guess they didn't, they didn't receive our email. So now, um, now that they did receive our email, they responded and we appeared before them.
Thank you.
Can you share with us what the grievances were that were presented by the neighborhood council?
Uh, yeah, there was, there was, uh, three. Uh, one of them was, uh, when we originally, uh, presented for the, uh, build-out, right, in the build-out, uh, we didn't know what kind of retail was going to go in this space. Uh, this is before I was involved with the license. Um, so, um, it was just a general retail. Once we, once we did, once we, uh, uh, so they, they were upset that we didn't let them know it was going to be cannabis. I personally didn't know it was going to be cannabis at that time. Uh, the second one is the distance. They, um, they kind of are, the school has put a lot of, is, uh, kind of had a lot of complaints to the neighborhood council because they allege that our distance is too close. And then the last one is the, um, um, they, they didn't get our email. So they, um, there's kind of like a, a notion that we were attempting to not communicate with them. Um, but now we've, I think, addressed all the issues.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Thank you for calling in.
President Mason, there is another raised hand. I'm not certain who this may be.
You may verify.
Caller with phone number ending in nine nine eight four, please state your name and whether you represent the applicant.
Uh, hello, my name is Colter Carlisle. I'm the Vice President of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. Uh, I was calling to make public comment, respond to the things that, um, uh, the applicant addressed. Is this the appropriate time for that?
One moment.
It would have been prior to.
Yeah, hi, this is Emily Watt, Deputy City Attorney. Um, so we're not showing that your neighborhood council filed a community impact statement?
Uh, we sent it over, uh, yeah, so we, we sent it over to the Cannabis Commission a couple of days ago. Uh, we were under the impression that it was filed for this item. Um, it is, it is listed on the, um, item on the website with our statement that we can click on. Is, is that sufficient?
Well, we need to verify it. Um, we're like, we're checking right now, one second. But we, so thus far, we don't have a community impact statement.
I'm al- also happy to read that to you if that's easier.
Is there a, a, a file number, a reference number that you have that you could assist us with looking up?
Yes, so this is my first time submitting one of these. Uh, but, uh, I did see it on here under the submissions. Um, just hitting the back button real quick, let me look. Um, so yeah, under, under regular communications on the website.
Which website? I'm sorry, sir.
Uh, one second. On the, um, cannabis.lacity.gov. Um, about Cannabis Regulation Commission, Commission's Meetings for March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Did you file this with the city clerk's office?
Um, we were told that we need to send it to the Cannabis Commission.
I'm sorry. Yeah, this is Emily Watt, Deputy City Attorney. I'm being told by the Commission Assistant, um, that that's not the appropriate method, I'm sorry, to have filed the community impact statement. It had to be done through a city council office or a city clerk's office, I'm sorry.
I see. Okay, um, how would you like me to proceed? Would you like any of our feedback then on this point?
Well, unfortunately, then your comments should have, um, been presented during public comment, which is now closed.
I see. Um, I, I tried to call in and raise my hand in time. I guess I was just a little late, but I did, everything went pretty faster in that time period. That's why I wasn't able to raise my hand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir. If, if you did submit a written statement through the Commission Correspondence, then, um, and if it was timely, then, um, rest assured that it's being presented to the Commission.
Understood. And my very last question then.
Yeah, I'm sorry, is this the? Go ahead.
Are, are you saying that the, the Commission did not read our letter?
No, I'm saying if you submitted it in accordance with the Commission's rules and operating procedures, then it, then it will be considered, it is before them. I believe it's the email from Stephanie Park?
Yes, correct.
Right, with the E H N C Letter of Opposition dash fifteen oh three North Mariposa, DCR Annual License Application dot PDF?
Yes, correct.
Okay, great. Yes, the Commission does have your letter.
Okay, uh, thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. Thank you.
Are we going to allow it this time?
No, I don't believe so, since they didn't follow the rules for the community impact statement. I'm sorry. Okay.
Then we are moving on to deliberations.
Commissioner Farmby, um, from what I'm hearing, um, I, I, I was not present at the meeting where this took place, but according to compliance, there's one outstanding violation um, out of the seven that was identified during the visit that took place in August of twenty-four. Um, and it happened to, I, I believe, April second. Uh, and in addition to that, based on the Executive System Director, uh, report, uh, we have kind of reviewed the identified partials uh, that speaks to the qualifications of meeting the seven hundred, uh, square feet or above. Um, I don't know if there's any other identified issues here, but kind of based on what I see, that they seem to meet the qualifications of compliance.
May I agree with, uh, Commissioner Farmby?
Commissioner Nash?
I have, um, an issue with the interpretation of the requirements. And I personally believe there's some, um, different ways to interpret it. And, uh, I, I look at things like it, it should be, um, measured in a straight line without regard to intervening structures from the closest exterior wall of each business. I have a question as to whether, uh, that parking area, uh, on one of the pictures, uh, would be included in that definition as being part of the business where commercial cannabis activity is occurring. Um, so I, I have some serious concerns about those issues that, um, I think are subject to interpretation.
This is Commissioner Farmby. Um, I know that we procedurally, uh, President Mason have uh, closed this, oh, you left.
No, he's right there.
Oh, see. I was gonna ask maybe if there is some way to get some clarification on the interpretation.
Okay, we will close deliberation at this time and reopen staff presentation for a question and answer.
So, uh, Jason, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Vice President Nash, I don't know if you wanted to.
Uh, this Vice President Nash, I, I do want to point out that, uh, Jason Colleen, uh, pointed out that the statute excludes, uh, parking lots. I still think it's open to interpretation.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm sorry, this is, uh, uh, Commissioner Farmby. Jason, if I, if I heard you correctly, I, um, in, in your explanation, you had mentioned that the furthest exterior wall of the business was the point of measurement for the seven hundred square feet. Is that correct?
The closest exterior wall from where the commercial cannabis activity is occurring is the point at which we use to measure from the business.
Hmm. And then your presentation, you had highlighted that there was a, uh, cannabi-type parking structure that kind of differentiates between the measurement of the exterior wall and the actual parking structure. Do you, do you recall what I'm speaking to?
Yes, Commissioner, I do.
Okay, and in this particular case, we're talking about that exterior wall of the business was your source of measurement. Is that correct?
The.
Not the parking, but the actual buildings, exterior wall of the building.
Mr. Mays, could you please go back to the first picture in the presentation?
Yeah.
The, where the glass windows are, you see those roll-up doors.
Yes.
Um, the measurement is taken from there because that is the closest exterior wall to where the commercial cannabis activity occurs.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. I'm tr- I'm trying to get to, um, what Vice, uh, Vice President, uh, Nash is, is speaking to. So at least for me, I have clarification on this piece. Um, the question that I have is that, uh, if there, if the, if the parking lot is excluded, um, w- what's the interpretation that we're trying to try to figure out?
Uh, Mr. Mays, can you please go to, um, one of the images that has the parcel and the measurement? Right there. So, um, on this screen, you can see, um, first, if you could go back to the larger aerial image towards the end of this, and then we'll come back to that exact slide. So when, when you conceptually talk to the community, the community views, um, the, so the bottom left-hand corner, that building that has a pool there.
Yeah.
That is a completely residential unit, so that is unrelated to the properties that are owned by the church. Just north of the residential complex, that is what the church says is a preschool. Now, a preschool is not K through twelve. And this preschool is not licensed by the Department of Social Services. So this location is not considered a sensitive use. This is using the same shared parking lot as the building where the school is located. So if we were to assume like this entire complex is one big lot, then there is a sensitive use on it. And then there is something that's not considered a sensitive use. So the lots combined would not be exclusively for the school. And when you look at that, the definition says that it excludes parking lots. So, you know, even if we were to argue that the building that, the one where Vice President Nash indicated where we cut halfway through the building, because that's the, the whole parcel where the legal address is. If you take the other half of the building, um, Mr. Mays, if you could go back um, to the one where I'm measuring to the corner of the building, uh, no, if you could go forward just a little bit, um, one more? One more? One more? This one. So here, you can see the measurement from the building to that closest corner of the building, which is a, which is associated with where the school is located, which is not the preschool, which is not the parking lot. You can see that it's just over 700 feet. So if we measured closest exterior wall to closest exterior wall excluding the parking lot, we're still barely outside of a 700-foot radius. So even if we included that entire building, which DCR did not do, it would still be outside of the 700-foot radius. The only way that it falls within is if you measure to that parcel line for the other half of the building and you exclude the area that's there that's tied to parking. So we would have to make too many jumps to get this to be considered a sensitive use and make it non, um, non-compliant.
And this is Commissioner Melendez, and the California, uh, is six hundred, right, for the state?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Does that apply here? No?
No.
Uh, no, sir, because it's outside of 600 feet, so it's going to comply with the state law.
And.
DCR has determined that it complies with local law, so it would be compliant.
There would be like, both with the state and with the local jurisdiction, right?
Yes, sir. And they do have licenses from both the city and the state.
And, uh, Commissioner Farmby, uh, as a matter of process, um, I don't know if this is legal, uh, President Mason. In order to get to, um, my understanding of Vice President Nash's concern on interpretation, will we have to go back to deliberation, or can we talk about that here while we're in the report for the staff?
That would depend. That would depend on if Vice President Nash had questions for the staff. If he doesn't, then we can go back to deliberations.
Okay.
Are we finished with staff?
I am. I don't know if I would defer to.
I didn't have any.
He didn't have questions, this was an interpretation issue. So we're closing staff report and returning to deliberations.
Okay. If I may, uh, Commissioner Farmby, so I, I, uh, Vice President Nash, I wanted to understand, uh, I'm, I'm trying to understand the, your version of the in- interpretation, just so I can help and we can get to some sort of decision.
Well, I guess the question in this regard, and I, and I appreciate, um, Mr. Colleen's, uh, reviewing of the distance to the beginning of that building, because that was also a concern of mine. It's point eight five inches, which is a very slim margin. But it is a margin. Um, so then I guess my concern would then be focused on that driveway area. Uh, parking lots are to be excluded. Um, that's not a parking lot. It's a driveway. I'm assuming that's where the employees go through. Is that part of commercial cannabis activity? That's why I said, you know, in my mind, there's some things that are left up to interpretation and I
And they're going and coming.
People are gonna view things differently, but I do see, uh, and it's such a close call in terms of the distance to begin with.
Um, and that's right. I'm sorry, this is, uh, Commissioner Farmby. The driveway, is that a part of the actual business or is that a part of the parcels for the, for the church?
Oh, no, I, I was referring to that, um, small area at the business.
Oh, got you. Okay. Oh, the little, okay, I understand.
And they're measuring from the, the corner of the building and not, you know, it says exterior wall.
Uh, understood. Yeah.
So would it be your statement that the driveway, because employees may access that driveway may be considered a part of commercial cannabis activity because the employees are hired by the business and help conduct commercial cannabis activity?
I, I get.
Commissioner Nash, this is, uh, Deputy City Attorney Emily Wada. So we're talking, just so I'm, make sure I'm on the same page here, we're talking about that the school does not have exclusive use of the parcel, right? Correct? So, correct?
Um, that's not the issue that we were just discussing.
Well, I mean, I'm just so we can know which part of, I guess, one oh five oh two that we're talking about, because it looks like there's a couple of rules condensed into one paragraph.
We were just talking about the distance from the commercial cannabis activity to the sensitive
Yeah.
Use.
Right. So then let me get, let me get to where I'm going. And then under one oh five point oh two subdivision B, it lists a couple of different rules about measurements. And so when the, um, sensitive use does not have exclusive control of the parcel that it's located on, the distance is measured from the horizontal, horizontal distance measured in a straight line without regard to intervening structures from the closest exterior wall of the commercial cannabis activity business to the closest exterior wall or fence under the control of the sensitive use excluding parking lots. So I, I'm only here to, to, to advise you that it doesn't seem that a driveway would be encompassed in a, in a, in that measurement. But ultimately, the decision is yours. And as long as you make the correct findings, I think, to support it and, um, you know, it's your prerogative. It, it all depends again whether or not the, and I think that there was.
Yeah, and, and the question is, is is the exterior wall referred to that brick wall or does it refer to the actual office space where they have the dispensary?
Sure. Then if, if you're going in this direction, I just want to make sure that you make your findings as clear as possible, what you're referring to as a wall. But when, I'm sorry, when you were talking about a driveway, I was becoming concerned because that, to me, assumes of an, an open path for, for cars in session, but there would be no walls. So I would, I, I, I'd be firm about identifying a wall then and how you are um, designating that as a closest exterior wall.
Understood.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And this is Commissioner Melendez. So we went through with, uh, with, uh, enforcement of compliance and, uh, they, this applicant has pretty much, uh, you know, given them, uh, proof that they work toward their, uh, their deficiencies. And they also, uh, uh, been open since two thousand twenty-three with no complaints. Uh, so besides the fact that we know we're discussing the, uh, the distance, I think everything else to me looks like it's in order.
Here's Commissioner Farmby. I, I mean, I, I, I agree with, with that, um, Commissioner Melendez. I, uh, in deliberation, um, I was trying to, um, my attempt was to understand the, um, interpretation that, uh, Vice President Nash had, had, had put before us to, to take into consideration, or at least what he uh, was highlighting, right? And, and being able to go back and hear the, the report in addition to hearing, uh, City Attorney Emily kind of defined it. Um, I'm clear on it, at least from my perspective. Um, cause I'm looking at it kind of based on what is defined as the furthest exterior wall. Now, I know that there's the, the overarching, like, um, uh, yeah, pathway uh, through, which I think can arguably be considered, right? I mean, it can. Uh, but kind of based on what I heard as defined, uh, by the, by the regs, it seems, at least for me, I have, I have clarity.
This is Deputy City Attorney Emily Wada. If it would help, and this is just a suggestion, if, if it would help Commissioner Nash or any of the commissioners here to review again some of the photographs, because right now the slides are under control of IT staff and it's, it's not showing you any of the pictures that you would need to maybe clarify your position. You're more than welcome to ask him to do that as well.
This is President Mason. I want to remind the commission that when we've had this deliberation, um, it involved that Hollywood property that was near a school. And it was established that the commercial cannabis activity point, commercial cannabis activity is defined as the activity that goes on at the point of sale. Not any portals of delivery or any portals of employee egress, entrance or egress. It was the point of sale.
When it's, uh,
Uh, this is Vice President Nash. I, I missed the beginning of that. Um, could you just repeat it?
Do you remember, hmm, maybe it was December? There was, um, a dispensary that came before us before. And it was near a school. There was argument about the measurements that were used by the department to determine the distancing. And at that time, um, AD Kline clarified for the, the commission that dispensary, commercial cannabis activity is at the register at the point of sale. Exclusively at the point of sale.
This is Vice President Nash now.
If you have a question for him. If you have a question for him, I can reopen.
Okay, let's, let's reopen.
Okay, then we're closing deliberation, reopening staff presentation.
This is Vice President Nash. Um, you heard what President Mason just indicated. Uh, if in fact that was an accurate representation, um, what was your representation based on?
Assistant Executive Director Jason Kline. Um, so I do recall the case that President Mason was talking about. The land use ordinance has different distancing requirements based on that commercial cannabis activity. So for the type ten activity, which is that retail storefront, you know, that is different than for some of the vertically integrated businesses that you've seen that have cultivation, delivery licenses, manufacturing, et cetera. When we look at the seven hundred feet, we're looking at the portion of the business premises diagram that is tied to that license type. So if they also have manufacturing or cultivation, like at the rear of the facility, we wouldn't measure from the exterior wall that's adjacent to that. We would measure from the closest exterior wall to the type ten activity. Um, in this particular case, that the closest exterior wall to where the retail storefront with onsite sales activity is occurring is that corner of the glass wall where we measure from, which is why I didn't pick the wall that was on the, like, the other side of the drive-through. I picked the point which is tied to the actual activity in the business premises diagram.
Thank you. Do you have, um, a definition that we could refer to of commercial cannabis activity?
I can do that for you right now, sir.
Thank you.
This is Deputy City Attorney Emily Wada. Um, Commissioner Nash, I'm sorry, just up on your toes, Jason. That's in the definitions sections of one oh four point oh one. And if you'd like, I could read that to you.
Okay.
So, uh, commercial cannabis activity is defined includes the cultivation, possession, manufacture, distribution, processing, storing, laboratory, testing, packaging, labeling, transportation, delivery or sale of cannabis or cannabis products in the city as provided for in Division ten of the California Business and Professions Code and the California Code of Regulations as currently defined or as may be amended. That's, uh, one oh four point oh one A ten.
Thank you. And, um, Mr. Clean has provided me with it as well. You know, I there's just no other way to put it. This one is a really tough one. Because I don't know, for example, if there's delivery activity occurring at this dispensary. And if there was, if they parked the car in that driveway, um, if they load in the back and drive through and leave, that's delivery is commercial cannabis activity. So I would say that that area would possibly be included within the definition.
The, the department would just advise that there is a definition, I believe, for business premises which, which talks about what is actually like a, a vehicle is is equipment that the business could use to engage in the activity. And that vehicle like will move off of the lot, but it's not part of the fixed business premises diagram. And the vehicle is subject to the regulations for how it has to be maintained and tracked, et cetera. And I do not believe a vehicle is part of the defined business premises diagram. And in, when we do our measurements, we are looking at a business premises diagram and where the activities are lawfully allowed to, to occur. And because each of the license activities have different requirements, we, we treat our measurements and analysis on each activity. So there have been cases where a retail storefront couldn't have the type ten activity on one side of the building because it would fall within seven hundred feet. But they could have cultivation on that side because it was more than six hundred feet away from the activity. And the applicant has to work with their landlord and building and safety to update their business premises diagram, do tenant improvements to have a distinct differentiation. Additionally, because the licenses are different activities, an applicant could always submit different records. So you have one record that could still be on the same legal entity. It only has cultivation that takes up that half of the building such that your other record has a distinct business premises for, um, retail type ten, which will only reflect that activity, which will clearly show that the exterior wall is on the other side of the building. So there, there are ways that businesses could present an image to the city to kind of allude to what, to evade what you were talking to. For our purposes, we measure based on the activity and we do like to see what's completely under the control of the applicant. And we do like to treat the activities together so that there is non-compliance. It's one notice to correct as opposed to multiple notice corrects for each of the different records and licenses.
This is, uh, Commissioner Melendez, Jason. And just to clarify, the applicant paid a surveyor to come in and do measurements. So his surveyor came back with the conclusion that it's more than seven hundred feet away as well, right?
Uh, based on their correspondence to the commission, that was my interpretation of that correspondence.
Yeah. So between the surveyor and your, and the department, you guys have both concluded that it's seven hundred feet, correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for department staff?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, then we are closing department presentation, reopening deliberations. Hopefully for a motion at this point.
After four continuations. I don't have, um, so if I may, that's it.
Well, are you, are you good?
I had no further comments.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, all right. Item number eight, DCR core record number three, two, zero, zero, one, seven, applicant H Wood, California LLC. Uh, the business premises is located at one, five, zero, three North Mariposa, uh, Avenue. Uh, I make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation to stay in the report.
Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Thank you, Mr. Vizel. Please call the roll. Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Nay.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Before we close, I will say that parts of this meeting did not go as I had envisioned today. I am going to step out on a limb and say to the constituents who did appear expect, with different expectations, I'm going to extend apologies. On behalf of this commission, I will also say it is it, well, my vision was that this would be the day that we go beyond the ten. And the ten is the ten minutes that we usually afford applicants to present. That we would have engaged in some dialogue, that we would have, um, made some steps towards recommendations from this commission to the city for, um, improvements where we believe they should be, where the, where we believe they are necessary. That did not occur. Um, I do believe in the old adage wisdom says that there's a time and place for everything. And unfortunately, today was not the time. I do hope that time appears sometime in the future, sooner than later. But my apologies to you and to this commission for the conversation that did not take place. The time is four fifty-seven and this meeting is adjourned.